...of some of the folks to take a look at a market research study that could specifically look at ways to identify what's most important for the citizens of our school and certain areas and then outskirts in terms of pools, child areas, et cetera, and bring that market research information back to help us as to what will get cut, what will get smaller, maybe what will get a little bigger. Doesn't that help a little bit?
Yeah, it does. There are also otherwise facilities that have been built, and those blueprints, I believe, are something that we could get a hold of if we wanted to. Those things generally get built for around eleven million dollars. So if we have our client, customer, taxpayer, telling us that these are the important things to us, and a facility that could come off the shelf would satisfy those needs, there might be some opportunity for some economy there. The trick is to make sure that we have early childhood education and childcare taken care of as well. And so that's where you think, okay, maybe, maybe not, you can take an existing plan and work forward on that.
So that's...
Are we building a Y or are we building a city?
Well, it would be a building that's built by the city, owned by the city. So, you know, we're splitting hairs in the sense of if it's an existing building design, it happened to be built by a Y. But are we building a Y M C A? It's still a building that's owned by the city.
What do you think market research study had now?
Hasn't been served in what we have worked exactly. What's that?
If I may, it really depends on what we want to have. If you want the scope of work to include four items or 14 items, there's usually a greater cost to that. I've worked up a long history. I don't know if that's something you should share. The thought is, is there's a lot of questions that we have. The more questions we ask and what we can answer, the more specific it can be in terms of design. But typically, that market research study will cost between twenty and thirty thousand dollars. But it's a lot of money.
It absolutely is.
But when you're looking at a facility that's seventeen million dollars in Y M C A terms, that's not a lot of money. That's utilizing the limited resources we have and utilizing that as best we possibly can for our taxpayers.
But this is the sort of thing that you can open up and start saying, okay, what is it the public really wants? And so one suggestion that I threw out there was a question that asked, if this is built with an indoor pool or two, should we close Edmondson Park? Wouldn't it be nice to have that burden lifted off of us trying to figure out what's the best way to go and instead have the public tell us this is the way we want to go? So there are some real opportunities with doing another, go back to the public and get their opinions on this.
I think it's a matter of taking the data that was gathered before and trying to refine it based on, we have a limited, a smaller amount of cost. And before we go out and have some of the design that, do we know what the priorities really are?
Prioritize that first time through? I remember going to some of the meetings.
As I say, it seems to be like we're starting over.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're starting over, but I guess, I just want to ask that question. Didn't prioritize, I'm trying to remember, the meeting was a long time ago, but I said on a couple of them.
It was prioritized, as I understand it, it was prioritized based on twenty-five million dollars. We don't have twenty-five million dollars now. We have seventeen or eighteen, whatever my budget is. So something, as you know, it's our own home budget. We only got a certain amount of money. We thought we could do more. That usually means they're comfortable more money, or we got to cut somewhere, or it's a combination of both.
And I guess I didn't remember it quite, but I thought we had meetings with the architect before we had the cost. We prioritized what the needs were, and then they designed something. Now, they may not have designed it well, I'll certainly grant you that. But then from that, we got the cost. I didn't think we said, what can we build for twenty-five million? But maybe we did. It's been a long time ago.
No, I think we used it.
Two, so.
Where are you at with that?
Beth, Linda?
Yeah, you guys lived it probably before we did, so.
Still explaining it, the way it happened. But I think now the reality is that the community only wanted to give seven and a half million. So, you know, going back and figuring out what can we build for seven million or what?
Just the conversation, as we discussed it, what if the school builds the daycare and the city builds the pool? And then you build a building that you can add to?
So the school can pay for the preschool part of it. That's what the people do. And so they are paying for part of the pool and the preschool part of childcare. But we have the zero threes that they aren't able to fund.
But that is local pocket. I mean, that's essentially what we're trying to do is gain some economies of scale and some of the synergy that goes around the program. We're trying to do that by combining the efforts. So I think we are doing exactly what you said. But we have one G C, we have one project.
It all comes in, I think it all comes to the...
You could, yeah, it could potentially pay. I mean, you talk about, it's kind of a formula. I think everyone's talked about it. There are different phases to that. I don't know. I mean, I don't know if that's, is that what the public would want, or would you rather have just a smaller complete facility? What does that mean?
Well, that's what I, yeah, pool. If we need, if we need a competition pool, and maybe the other pool, you know, we start building the pool right back ourselves. The daycare will get done, the school builds the daycare, everybody needs the daycare, and then we have to grow even the rest of the recreation facility.
Why does the city need to get the daycare business?
Well, early on, they didn't think they needed to, but...
Obviously, the letter one in the House has stated that they've done an extensive study. I mean, they know it's going to cash flow. They didn't say how. The Y has been working for you having cash flow. So what makes us think that with our tax law, we can cash flow something they can't do with forty years, thirty years later?
Well, that's not quite, I remember, we talked a long time ago, when daycare was going out of University Park, then we got the bad news. Well, they can't build the building. But it could, but it could fund its operation is what I think I remember. They gave it one percent margin, but very iffy, but it can. The Y will fund itself. But we want a pool in recreation.
But I think what we're saying, like, certainly not, it could fund itself based upon the studies. If you have a new facility and the studies they've done at other locations, the membership rates should be able to sustain its operation. Not building buildings, same thing with the early childhoods, but operating expenses could be funded. Again, that's based on studies at other locations when they got a new facility. That's what we've been told.
Yeah, we believe all that information, you know, if it will actually do that. Here's much of the Y, they haven't done a great bang-up of the public advocacy here like they had at Des Moines or every other place that I've noticed. So, who was the past charterer of the Y? They did not support themselves very well. And move forward with them being a lead, I don't know if we want, we want to do that right off the bat, so.
I was with you right up to the end. What'd you say?
Like, it's going, you've got to have this, this is going to be a city facility not a Y.
Yes, it's a city-owned facility, absolutely.
But the city may not want to run the building, right? The Y, the Y has the ability to run it. That's correct. They have, if they have...
So we're all talking the same thing. Right. Because the thing that, having been on the Y for...
We're billing out non-profits with our tax laws.
But I think one of the things behind the market research that we're talking about is there's still an opportunity to go back and say, are there other key entities that need to be brought into this discussion? And so, agency not aging, should there be a multi-generational facility and should they be built here? You know, you go through the different needs and say, maybe this, maybe that's something that can occur through this process if we as a group want to move forward. If council thinks that you have enough information to make a decision to give me direction to build a building, then we'll work with the architect and we'll have to go through that process. But I think what we were talking about is kind of a leisure group, the mayor and I. And the Y was that we probably want to know exactly what we're going to build and that we have to be very careful, just as Mark said, and make sure that we're delivering the project right and before we launch off them. But, yeah, so I'll stop there. But if the council is in favor of another study, then I still think there needs to be a process through, there would be another process through hiring an architect that would review the data that was previously collected. And we have time now, priorization.
But I mean, the feeling is people are knowledgeable that we can't get enough information. Is that, I mean, is that the gist? Our information is bad?
I don't think that, I don't know, maybe the citizens' information is bad.
I think, I think we could go back and have a road test, the membership against revenue sources in the space of the building, and make sure that if we can't get everything, where does the membership revenue drive? So that we're putting those things in the building and making sure that it's what, that we're getting operations, pay for it as well. We're going to have to test something. What is it? And you think you're getting everything. You say everything, but it, but like, no, we cut the pool, that cuts eighty percent of our membership. And so, why would we build this if you're cutting in eighty percent of the membership?
So the model that we're doing?
Just the competition pool. I mean, I'm not saying that we would do that, but just having this, having the market people come back and really test out and say, these are your drivers of membership. And so if this is why you want to build the building, because these, the people are going to be using this. One of the things when I, when we talked to other people is people said they want a rock wall, plank wall. And it is something that will drive, will finally join that facility, that the rock wall, but they never use it. And so, if we had a rock wall in it, would we cut that? Because people don't use it.
So you got to find out. How do you find out?
Well, honestly, we did the other survey that they were doing. I never going to build more. I did too. That was so long. It had so many offerings and on and on, that of course, it sounded like though we could have anything in all of it. So it would be kind of, you might be able to use that, but it was very, she was poorly designed, I thought. Maybe, and I'm, she's married for saying that because I don't even have to reflect on whoever designed it, but about three fourths of the way through, I was like, don't even want to keep doing this. So if we have another survey, I hope it will be more specific and more user-friendly and more tied to reality of what we really have. Did anyone else feel that way when you had that survey?
A lot of people did. Yeah. And I think we're not, we're not saying the information is bad. I think the information you gathered is valid. But funding has changed. So we have to take a look at what can we do? And as Lyndy's saying, will it, will, what features need to be there to make it sustainable? And I think that's what we're trying to do is to refine it. So we don't cut something that really people want. I mean, we do have good data, but if we have to make decisions about what to leave in and what to stick out, we want to have good data.
I think the survey will do that, though.
We think the market analysis will help us do that.
Can I just add real quick? Just a way to think about it. I mean, I think there's a question of whether it was a good city or not. I think it was. Remember where we were a year ago was, we don't even know if we want to keep going or not do people and the community value this at all. So that was really big. If you can go about it as a funnel, right? So we had that survey was really long and we all agree that should have been designed differently, but we got a huge amount of data. And so we went from not knowing anything and asking all the questions, wide range of questions, to narrow it down to something that was worth like a scope of a project. And now that it's come through the vote and it's further constrained down, we need to get tighter analysis to have a more refined understanding of what's really going to, going to drive this project. So it was good data and it led to a project that was ultimately good. But we have further constraints. We just need to know more to, to be able to do it. I mean, of course, it's the council's decision and market research and that sort of thing, but I think they're already done.
What would the cost be just a competition in the pool?
It's estimated seven or two, but that was not for that.
But then if you don't have the rest of the structure, what is added?
We need the rest of the structure. Well, I say where they're at.
Well, you got to have all the doors. I mean, you got to have full walls. You got to have locker rooms.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if you can just, I don't know if you can take a strict number for what the pool is and not, there may be a difference.
The Y, what can daycare anywhere it's at now, it's a pool. Well, that is inbuilt.
We don't have a daycare right now. We have daycare happening, childcare happening at four facilities.
That's why I don't worry about that. I'm saying, let's stop our tax laws into the daycare and compete with private enterprise. Let's just go with a facility and call it an indoor pool. That's a competition pool for the high school.
Well, you're going to have to re-vote.
Well, that's the thing, well, when the school is going to let you...
Well, that's true. We can have the school. We can build, build an elementary school. Because I'm not too sure that was going to be any...
So, one of the things that, there, we have a shortage of child. We have a waiting list for every age kid at the Y. There's not enough. There's more demand when there are seats available in this community for childcare. So you can say we're going into the competition with the private sector, but those needs, those, those needs are not being met right now. And we're turning kids away. And so, as a community, we have to figure out how to get, how to meet those needs.
Mayor, I know, I know we don't take votes during work sessions, but based on some of the discussion, your second item, which we reaffirm immediately, the project, do you need to try and see if you have consensus to work with the school and spend eighteen million dollars on a refined scope? It sounds like some discussion, we may need to reaffirm that for you.
That's what I'm, well, in that, I'm kind of trying to read between the lines of what people are saying. And what I'm sensing is that, yes, there's general agreement that we need to proceed forward with this. You know, so in substance, we would not vary from what the voters approved. It's kind of out here. But I want to make sure I'm on the right track with that and that everybody understands that.
Yeah, I guess, you know, a lot of my questions were put out there to see what kind of projected scale we're going to look at. I mean, if we're going to move ahead, if you want to spend a lot of money, it's not something that we really want to look at. But I do want to see, I want to know what it is that they're thinking about, whoever's trying to design this thing, you know, to tell me what it is going to look like.
Yeah, yeah. And so we run into a number of projections, I guess, where we have to say, okay, well, what do we know? Well, we know we have a revenue stream. Therefore, we know that we have the ability to build the building. Borrow money, you can build, go back to what you're saying, what's the scene going to look like? So in order to answer that question, we have to go back and say, well, we know what people wanted, that we could build for twenty-five million dollars, but we can't get that done. So now we have to figure out, where do you make your slices? And so, then it gets back into, well, where's the biggest bang for the buck? Is there something in there that...
Well, as we go right back to the same question I asked, we had the original had two pools. Probably lose a pool. So then at that, at that point, then we keep, are we going to keep the Edmondson pool for the outside and the rec pool type stuff we deal with for our competition? Or...
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 Yes. And that's an option, I mean, that's an option, but that's part of what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to...
We have to explore that. That's part of what we're trying to figure out with these discussions.
Yeah. Or is there a design that allows you to join those two pools together? The big difference is, we wanted to keep two separate temperatures, but maybe there's some way that those can share a boiler and somehow you can make it so the competition pool is a little bit more amenable to the folks who are convening and let the other recreational pools still be warm. I mean, there's a lot here, I think, that we need to decide what's important and then start pursuing, well, how do we go about building that? There's some other things going on there for a competition pool during the winter times.
Also, with the fire station, we had to make some cuts, but we love the provision to have a number bay. Should, you know, maybe we can do that, but the steps too, the provision that can, I didn't hear it, the site easily connected at a later time. But I personally agree with what you're going forward with this. And I think I'm saying it's not throwing water on it. I'm just thinking aloud.
Okay, okay. So I'm sensing it's okay, keep running at it. Let the committee heat, let it work on, on deciding what this next building is going to be.
I'd say quite a bit so far.
Okay?
Move ahead.
Yep, silence is...
Yeah, I just, you know, if we have to spend thirty thousand dollars again, I don't know why they, I laid down trust architects, I trust engineers, but why they can't take that drawing and carve it up and say, here's, here's what you can have, here's what you aren't going to get done. I realize there's no other revenue stream that we may as ever finish it. But...
Well, I want to say something. I'm for going forward, asking a question. But we know we can't build what we plan to build. We don't have the funds. We do, like most of you said, we need to revisit the existing plans, see what we need to do, what we can afford. We can go from there. But I don't think it's a very good idea to get rid of the outdoor sink pool. There's a lot of noise on that. A lot of us, I mean, a lot of questions that they consider they do, if we want to be on there. Because me, I keep the outdoor pool. With the new building, planning the one pool, the whole up to school and their competition, then we got fun to put in the pool that we, that will slide. There's also a tractor here, isn't there?
Or a desk, or what's that?
Okay, maybe that's something we really need it, because they got two outdoor tracks. People use the old stadium during the winter. That's just a lot. I think we're all taking pictures and that for the pools. Oh, we're going in one gym, or one, or two gyms.
Two gyms and that, you've gymmed.
Yeah. So, I don't know, some of those things there, we might have to eliminate. But we plan to expand further.
You know, really, here noticing too, that if we try to find the competition pool, the rec pool, can you participate? We can, we can participate and put money towards the competition pool. Not to say that if there was some type of new design that would allow that to happen, again, we're contributing thirty-two dollars to that competition pool, that will continue. And again, from the school's perspective and my conversations with our board is, we're still a hundred percent in and want to continue. But, you know, we're also looking at this very carefully as to the remainder of the community. And so, I'd like to be able to come back to the board. We have a meeting tomorrow night and just let them know that one way or the other, the city is still on board or whether or not it's a no. My sense is it's, you're still on board, but we know we're going to have to make some changes and some minor modifications to the, to the plans and that is determined. As far as the dollars that it might take to initially get involved, I've had a couple of informal conversations and right now it's kind of mixed. But that conversation I still, I still think we had in, in the board room and...
Are you talking about the market study or the architectural?
Right now, I don't know.
Okay, yeah. And so, just for further elaboration, one of the things that we talked about is could the local option tax won't be collected until next year. And so, how do we keep momentum moving forward? How do we bring our, on board? Could we partner with the school and have them fund that, those fees and help us with that? And Russ is still asking.
Yeah, I don't have a, maybe it's...
I guess, maybe, I'm certainly on board.
Okay.
For, I think we got to change scope, reduce the scope, but if we're not counting on building eighteen million dollar grade, so they...
Okay.
The place on market side, is there a way, just a thought here, maybe do another market study that also use what's already been done?
That's...
Maybe it helps reduce that cost? Because I, well, when I, I'm just saying, I hear in experience, some people think that they, they want to go use the Y, but it's all what they're going to be, some of them have to be a member. Not, not later, that wasn't true. Because I think, I know you did a survey before you, who didn't have a right to get this data, the membership only, or is that how the survey was?
No, it's certainly, it's certainly what...
Okay. So, oh, so it really not just for members. I mean, I think, so staying itself, we want people, if I want to, just swim for a hour or so and pay for it, I think, you know. That's a lot of initiation costs.
Right. So you're talking about either regular membership or you're talking about just even one, use one, what you can do now?
Right.
And that's, yeah, and that's a really good job. That's part of what we're talking about is testing how much of that flexible membership, flexible fees, all those types of things. So we figure out, I mean, some of it is about the facilities, some of it is about the operation.
So one of the things that I'd like to have tested is, you know, Edmondson Pool, keep it open or not. And again, yes, there was quite a bit of feedback about that. And honestly, I'd like to have it tested as to whether or not the Y should operate that as well. Is that a companion piece to what's being offered through the university? So not necessarily direct competition with them, but we still have to figure out how to help offset some of the revenue for us. But I think that needs to be tested as well.
Well, I know why you're saying that. And I don't disagree about testing the waters about the Y. But, you know, we've got this problem when you say Y in this community. But if they're the best one to run it, I don't, we wouldn't want to give that up just because the people will take a survey, the know-sayers, and they're going to say, don't do that. That's just what came to my head, Mike. I just, you know, because...
As we've been an outsider on the, you know, the other twenty years, so it's on the outside more.
That's who you're asking.
But I, you know, hopefully, with this forever, you always hear things about the Y, a lot of negativity, you know, and to me, I think we need to pass on to that and just move forward. I mean, being like Eric says.
Because we've built a lot of pools.
I know, but...
And pretty much right now, they all got a Y table.
I forget what's, what's happened here in the past. I know this one, I'm honestly about things around here. You know, that's the past, and like, we need to have a pool. So I don't think...
I agree. I agree. I think that's the point is that by council saying, you know, this is the direction I want to go, you're going to help rebuild that credibility as the Y, as a viable organization. You're trying to make this be what you expect it to be and what the community wants it to be. So I think that, those discussions have to start here and continue here. And you have to spread that, we have to spread that.
Well, you can talk to people as long as you want, but it's just driven right now in time. I mean, so that's going to be hard to fight.
But I don't know if that's necessarily true. I mean, I think, again, it comes back to, yes, there's capital issues that they're struggling with. They also, they're a membership organization, they're in a facility, that's a way to manage a situation, right? And so they're going to continue. And again, issue bonds. So we might be facing, you know, people might say the same thing about it, you know, Edmondson Park, in our facility, we used to have twenty-five thousand people ago. Now we have twelve. And that's because we haven't made upgrades to our facility.
See, I don't hear feedback that the Y is formally upgraded or anything like that. I hear constant feedback that it's a very bad social...
Right now, I thought.
Rarely.
And I've been hearing the same thing about Edmondson Pool. It's outdated, it doesn't have what Pella has, it doesn't have what other communities have, and it's just boring. Well, we're, we're facing that same issue that the Y is. So I need to do a little bit of self-reflection about that. And again, we have to, have to set the tone, what forward that they're looking to do.
Yeah, well, with that being said though, without spending a bunch of money on Edmondson Pool to upgrade it to whatever it is that they think they want to see, you may as well build a new one if you're going to get, if you're going to get really deep into that. It's time to be sure that can clear up and put it back. It's going to be essentially in it. So you might as well build a new one.
I think those are, those are conversations that need to occur. Yes. I mean, the debt's paid off for that, that pool. Yeah, everybody can re-sign relief, that debt's going to pay off. But the facility's more than ten years old and it's showing that age and that wear and tear. Again, it's outdated.
Well, it's a lot over ten years.
Well, that's instrumentation, but yeah.
Yeah.
The playground is ten years old.
Yeah. So again, I think that's something that we have to talk about. And we're, we're working a step to try to get some of that information together for you. I'm not going to have a plan for full renovation, but the idea of upgrading the slides, I mean...
Well, upgrading the broad, upgrading more, people that pays, what are schools, what are their schools like that? That's what they're doing, one Pella and others. And it'll, some comments are just, it was all... And it'll, some comments are, just outside the old, they said they just like to have an area where they can sit and shave once a year. Get swayed, they don't have that there, that's just, that was small, but that's important. That's just one little...
I don't think we're gonna get a tank.
Ooh, I don't think we're gonna get a tank.
Yeah.
We got grandma sitting on there, she wanna shave.
Well, I thought it was a lot.
When it used to be vegetable oil, or baby oil, or whatever.
You can tell I was a relative, I'm on YouTube.
Baby oil. But I did, I did... Market analysis, I mean, it'd be really, too, because I think they impact each other.
So Lynda, you felt like this market study would give us better data in order to make decisions on what direction to go, or is it eighteen million we have?
I think it allows us to dive into some areas that we didn't dive into a lot with. And so really tying the operations to the usage that we didn't necessarily get. And with knowing the cost of things now, with the drawing, so I think there's some numbers for expense that we can tie into and tie into, we tied into other communities, but really dig into how we compare it to your communities.
Well, eighteen million is a lot of money. I think we were cut corners on our information study because we didn't want to spend the twenty million, I mean, twenty thousand, to find out how this can be eighteen million. So maybe that's more, even than I thought. I thought maybe we could look at this other survey they did, it was so expensive.
So one of the things that we did with the fire stations, as an example, whenever you're gonna hook that, users of the facility, you go through a programming phase. And we bring an architect in, that's what we did. So we sat down with the fire staff and said, "Okay, what is it that you need? What are your critical elements, what are the nice to have? And if you could, you know, if money was unlimited, what would you have?" And so it would be my intent as part of this process, that the results that come from market analysis that council would like to pursue that would be the driving factor and essentially replace that programming stage, that architect. And so you should actually see some savings, I'm not gonna quantify that, but it should save some of that legwork that's done by the architects that never on board.
And I'm okay with that, but I'm, I guess I'm a little bit sensitive to just putting it out in the public that it's a study.
Yes.
Because I think over the last few years, we've maybe gotten a black eye or two with some of our studies we spent money on, and then haven't really put legs under any of them. So as Scotty pointed out, if we, if this is just the first phase of building this project, I'm all for it. Put it out there that we're gonna go do another study. Let's at least come up with a name, and say, "This is architectural phase one." And so if we're not ready to build an eighteen million dollar facility, I don't know that I have anything to study. If we gotta refine the facility design, and that's the first thirty grand, I'm all for it.
Well, I'm calling it what it is, it's a study.
I don't think it is a study. I think, I think if you did study Aaron personally, now we're starting to do the design. That's what I see this as.
It's a study.
I don't think so.
We gotta put it to see in the public.
I'm not to see, I don't think it is a study, that's why I don't want to call it that. I, that's what I'm saying, I'm not out to go out and just do a study to ask people what they want. We did that, what they want. And I think of a market research study as you're asking eighteen thousand, or eleven thousand people to design the facility. We've kind of gotten the information. Now, if we need to refine it and start doing design work of what actually goes in it, I'm okay with that. I think that's great, that's part of the design. So if Michael just described, it's the first phase of architectural work, and it'll reduce architectural costs, then I think that's great. But, I mean, we, it's just a little bit different to me.
Okay, I think we got that part talked out. Next item was just to reaffirm, council appointed committee members for the project. I would like to keep Tom as a part of this committee that he's been involved in from the very beginning. You may remember Jason Van Zetten was the person before who was on this committee. And so in his place, I would like to appoint Gates to it, recognizing his experience in building buildings. Does that work for the rest of you guys? Does it work for you?
Well, I don't know, he did do pretty good with our station.
Well, they didn't just volunteer. Thank you, Tom, man. That's the best thing he does.
I tell everybody it was, you know, he designed the roof. I know, he, he said, "I got an idea." But, no.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Next bullet point is, you know, talking about operation of this building. It's a city-owned building. So the city has options, right? First thing we could do is develop a recreation board and put together the staff to operate this building. We can do that. Another option would be to just say, "Okay, who wants to?" And then you run the risk of someone who's not particularly competent at it. And then you also have a decision to make as to what's the culture that you're trying to build around recreation. Third option, we have the YMCA here in town. They've been doing it, they're entrenched. And if you pay attention to the YMCA philosophy, that talks about, not only is it about playing the games, but it's also developing the character of the people who are there. That's also worth considering. And so it would be my assertion that of the ways of operating this building, the YMCA is the best plan. What do you all think?
I, they've got the experience, and they've got places to dawn, and they have experience and places to call, and... I think that's, we, that's like, well, it's real personal.
Yeah.
So basically, would the Y rent the building, potentially?
We would probably tell the Y to operate it. It's our building, they operate.
Will we supervise it, or how would that work?
My presumption is that we would establish a committee for the building itself and the operations thereof. So, you know, there would, the ownership stays with the city. The operation of the program's in it, the school put in a significant amount of money, they deserve some representation in their share of the building, and so that board would have a piece of that. The YMCA would probably have a place at the table, but they would be treated as a contractor. The, you know, so you would set up some sort of agreement, probably on something along the line of the 2080 that says, "We're responsible for the building, you're responsible for the programs."
Venus may not be on the society, right?
Now, that, that's still to be determined, because what we have talked about was that, along with the building, the building would also be a maintenance fund that would be utilized. So now it gets back into maintenance, operations, that sort of thing. So let's say you got a swimming pool. Swimming pool takes floor. In my opinion, that belongs on the Y, because that's part of their operations. Okay? Light bulbs that go out, that sort of thing. Again, we provide the building, they provide the operations. So that's where my mind is at right now. It's no different than what we have with the Y operating in its own building, is that it has to maintain. And so as it puts wear and tear on the building, it fixes it.
What about, yeah, what about capital replacement? I mean, they're on their third boiler now.
Yeah. The YMCA, for all the criticism it's taken, over the last couple of years, has been funding its depreciation, if you understand what that means. So if you think about a thing, it costs ten thousand bucks and it's gonna last five years. So you'll have two thousand dollars of depreciation every year that's coming off. What the Y is doing is it's taking from its profits, that cash, and rolling it into a capital replacement fund. So that as things break, there's the opportunity for the Y to be able to go ahead and buy that replacement, or at least come down close to it if prices have shot up a little bit. But it's a way of maintaining some stability with the finances, and then also with one eye towards, we know that these things are all gonna wear out. Okay? So I'm speaking way ahead of it, in the sense that, well, I'm sitting here drafting the 2080 without any, talking to anybody else around the table.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's where my mind is at.
There are a number of examples in communities across the state and across the country. We needed to draw upon, and it's market, access those, or contacts, process, and what else. So it really can't be crafted in any way that fits the community needs, but...
But is what we're, what we're talking about a pretty standard deal? Where the community owns the building, and there's an operator, and in many instances, that's the Y. Is that, is that standard or not? I don't know.
In many communities, you know, a lot happens to be a little. But it's throughout the United States, in partnership, next to the school district, which is probably the number one partnership among these states, and it's formed after school there. Cities, municipalities, and hospitals. Because we have so much, and, you know, intrinsically, we care about the health and wellness of people. And certainly, teaching the important core values, preparing us to respect and responsibility and educating the students and children, those are important things. You know, and providing financial assistance to people who need it. And that's really what tends to separate the YMCA from every other department. That's how I end all of this. Was it the YMCA? I don't know, never would have been, but the masters do it. And that's something we can carry forward today. So whether it's childcare, whether it's youth sports, whether it's membership, it doesn't make the difference. Whatever it is that that family needs, the YMCA is there for them. And there's a cost to that. It's a real cost. And, but it's something that the YMCA is part of the mission, it's part of our philosophy. It's, again, something that, that's, I think, differentiates the YMCA from other organizations. And something we would want to continue.
And that's firsthand knowledge, Y, D-MAC, and the Y parted ways after a year into the project. D-MAC and the Y parted ways. They were gonna partner with the Y on their facility, their building right now, it's about to be open.
About that morning.
Yeah. Well, it's an agony. I'm not talking about the pool that's missing out of the old, yeah, whatever they call it, that center. This is an agony.
I have no idea. I'm fairly new to Iowa, everybody, but I know that if you take a look at St. Louis, you take a look at Kansas City, the relationship they have with the county, particularly, yeah, and those consist, that's awesome. They're not only just building facilities together, now they're expanding, making them even larger. So this happens throughout, I wish I could answer your question about the morning, but I don't know that much about it.
Just one specific.
But, but the model of city owning the building, having a private operator, that's the standard model, or is it?
It's prevalent throughout the...
Okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't be aware of it. And again, sometimes, again, some of the city department, that just runs it.
Sure.
And again, the details of it differ by organization. Sometimes the Y pays the city rent, and it's a sizable amount to help with that. But other times, it's just flat out, just what the mayor said. And we take care of all the capital, they're thankfully just operating for us, we don't have to pay for the offer.
Who said it, that they, the facilities?
So, and, and that would be it. And is that helpful information that we need to hand out? Again, because we've collected that information in your past, so we can send that back to our...
Might be a lot cooler in the winter.
Pretty easy.
And warmer in summer.
I have another question, just while that. All right, so Mark's a really good CEO of the Y. But when he decides to move on, we get a...
It could happen in any department.
And that's one aspect of it, we dump evidence, we need an extra CEO. Can I say something about that? Absolutely.
This has been discussed amongst board members. Two things. First one, if the city decides to go forward without the Y, and compete directly against the Y, I don't know if it's starting to work, I don't know if that could be... Second thing, in terms of leadership, which is always an important question, if this 2080 comes down, and partnerships start to come together, everyone's gonna know about it. All the CEOs are gonna know about it. This kind of a facility is something that configures CEOs, gets them excited. You'll get seasoned CEOs, seasoned CEOs applying for this position. You won't have any problem finding somebody who'd come in here and hit the ground running. Does that help?
Yeah.
He doesn't answer the question.
We get a ton, though, we operate up to the Y.
But it doesn't answer the question that you asked, though, which is, if you do end up with a debt, who has control of that position? Is it the Y or is it the city? If the...
The Y board.
Yeah, it'd be the Y board.
The Y board.
All right.
But if we can't fulfill whatever we've been requested to do, then I would think the city has problems to come in. And it's gonna be conversations before.
Absolutely, yeah. Although, from all the uniforms, getting dragged, I don't know, as I said, Mark's really, really good. And, you know, he moves on to a better position than he feels better, you know. That employee wouldn't be able to have a good quality. The board, you read it there?
There would be, obviously, you could create a separate board, like the mayor talked about. It could be a 2080, there could be representation, help each other, to help manage that. But if they, if their CEOs, they couldn't buy the law, so the higher tier wouldn't buy with them. But I think they would listen to what the higher board was saying about, or just offering, correct?
It's probably not exactly the same, but, you know, similar in some nature to the golf course. That's our facility, we have a private operator. If the private operator doesn't perform to whatever the standards we expect, there's ways that we can make a change. I'm assuming the same thing could be done, and that is going very well. I'm not saying this is... I think it's going very well. But something that would be written in the 2080 agree, that would protect us, it would be some levels of metrics or something that, it'd be the Y board's decision, but if it wasn't operating correctly, it would be a way out, and that just would have to be written, I think, I would have to use that, so nobody would.
Yeah, any contractor would require that we provide notice and an opportunity to remedy or cure that problem.
Sure.
And, yeah, I think that's pretty standard. How quickly that would happen, and obviously, hiring people takes time, and we don't want to rush or something.
Okay. So it sounds like we're okay with the idea of going now to Y operation. Thanks. Can I see the head nods?
Yes, sure. If it's the best, that's what I said.
Okay. Okay, we got at least a consensus. Okay, last bullet point, talking about outlining strategy and concepts, timeline to move things forward. So in terms of immediate steps, we talked a little bit about doing a refinement of the questions to the public. Like, okay, here's what, here's what we know so far, here's your wants for twenty-five million. Now that we've got re-force of that, where do we, where do we make our changes? And, and what would you suggest? So would agency on aging belong in this building as opposed to where they are now? I don't know. Might be worth asking.
We don't support them now. When Mike brought it up, I said, "You threw a curve on me," or, you know, we said we couldn't support them now because they're nonprofit.
But why wouldn't you? Because they'd be contracted through the Y.
Well, by what?
They'd just be a partner to the Y.
Yeah, they used to be a tenant or a service offered by the Y, in conjunction with the Y. I think there's always been a willingness...
I don't know, there's no revenue generation there, so I don't know.
But if they're, if they're attracted to the facility, and I mean, that's, that's the thing. I think there's been a willingness to have aging partner with the Y and have activities together. So I think that just needs to be scored a little bit more. There's no reason you couldn't have multi-generational program.
Appropriately makes sense.
At the facility.
What else? What else should we be thinking about doing in the short run?
So I think we want to get the subcommittee together with the appointed reps, and talk about proceeding with the market analysis. We need to hear back from the school district as well, and I think that's gonna be an important piece of that. And that will allow us to know if we have the funds from the school to proceed forward. Otherwise, we as a organization will have to connect with the funding for the market assessment, so...
So are telling him who we're gonna use for that, if we do it?
We don't want to do it.
It, it's something that would have to be vetted by, by that subcommittee.
Would it be different than actually hiring an Spanish architect that does these facilities and having them do it? Do you see it different than that, honey?
We thought, and we talked about that. In fact, should I be in conjunction with, could it just be a firm that's retained by architects?
Well, twenty-five minutes ago, that's what we were talking about, is, okay, it will be the start of the process. So, do you switch gears after that? I don't know, I'm not sure.
Good design.
I'm basically nervous, because you keep talking about architects. That architect better bring an engineer with him, because architects, they go to the school of liberal arts. They look, they build beautiful pictures. They don't, they don't know the mechanic side of, you know, that's a little bit why we got in trouble with the fire station.
So that's my question. The fire station, we had a, um, a one-nine-down overage. We just had a church back off their project, because they had an architect who also planned the sale. Not saying too much, no, we can't do it either unless they got to the bid. We're already over that much. How do, is there any way to protect ourselves from that kind of thing, or it just is what it is? So we end up with an eighteen million dollar drawing, come back, and we go out and bid, and we find out it's gonna be twenty-two million or twenty-three million or whatever. I mean, is there any way to, is there any way, maybe that's what Tom's talking about, is involve somebody else in the process besides an architect?
I don't know, I mean, obviously, that's smarter people than I am at this, but I'm thinking two examples in the last six months where it wasn't a pretty picture, so.
Yeah. You might remember that the architect for the fire department, or for the fire station anyway, came back and said, okay, his engineering estimate came in at something way less than three million dollars on our second iteration. So my thinking is we're probably gonna need to do the same with this, where we'll say, okay, this is a facility that we're gonna try to, oh, yeah, we wanna get it built for eighteen, but let's go ahead and design a building that's gonna be sixteen with a few more elements.
Architectural firms will end up retaining an engineering firm to check the numbers. That's what they do. That's what Borbok did, and they paid essentially third party to review the plans, confirm the, the engineering, the architectural, excuse me. And that matched up with, with, with the quote.
But he's like the general that he got the figures from. And I think Kelly's firm, which is the engineers were building it, he was asked to, so I don't know, I'm not sure how that all happened. Sign engineers, still the engineer of the fire station, right?
Yeah.
I was processing that question.
So, constituting, you know, having the committee need, reaffirming the commitment on part of schools or anything else in the short run, that you're aware of, right?
Well, I think we wanna shoot for refining partnership here at twenty-eight E agreement in the near future, between the entities involved. And, and again, the, the board, school board is saying, yeah, they, they're on board with helping us front that cash. That would have to be done for twenty-eight E agreements, so I think that would be part of it, a kickoff to that.
We're really on in this conversation, this person from Y or someplace found this conversation, said that they had a set of ones that they could fit our needs, which would eliminate a lot of step.
And so what, Tom, sorry?
It would eliminate a lot of step on the cost figures on that, if in fact you're gonna use those, those plants and drawings.
Well, they had set a plant, okay, and you're, I'm sorry.
So, you know, if you're gonna go to the public and find out information, are those plants gonna come forward? You're gonna look at that and see how that works out with that same, those same questions.
Well, the public input should come first, and then you see whether or not you got a canned plan that can actually fit that.
Yeah, you know about that.
Think about the way you buy a car. You know, do you go to the lot and accept what somebody gives you because it's in the price range? Or do you dream about, well, what, what is it that I really want first, and then you go looking for it? Then invariably get disappointed by it.
It depends on your paying cash or your finances again. It's certainly our house.
Yeah, so, you know, so, you know, there's, there's a little bit of that back and forth going on, but I think that the approach we need to make is saying first, what is it that we, what are the targets we gotta get as far as public's concerned? Then decide whether or not the existing facility hits that target as well.
There may be some things in that certain day that we, you know, like, we're not gonna be able to move some plans out or something. I mean, for the public, you know, if they're gonna come back, who's always wanting, like, that, whatever. And there's gonna be some things that that may as well probably won't be able to do enough. You know, put that on the table.
Yeah. I'm hoping to hear from the public that, we're not so attached to something. You know, so is it the indoor track, or is it some other thing? I don't know. But, you know, that's what I'm hoping to hear, is that we'll get some guidance that says, you know what? We're not so attached to this part after all. We'll see.
Do you want it to park on, just park in the grass? Russ, from the, from the school side, is, is what you're allowed to contribute to, is it?
Yeah, immediately.
Tied to the, the specific design? So I guess my question is, if, if we cut pieces of it, and that's what you can, your funding has to cut as well, or?
Possibly.
How does that work?
Yeah, again, we can provide funds directly that are related to the school. So in other words, if you decide to reduce the square footage by a thousand feet, which you still are looking to... But if you're still looking to incorporate all the things that we can provide monies for, then we can continue. I mean, it would be, we're talking, again, athletic locker rooms, competition pool, and that small gym for the preschool, and then job care area, preschool itself, all the things that the school would directly use, then we can still provide those funds.
So the overall scope can come down, if that piece doesn't change, then your amount of funding exists.
Correct. So if we look at the two pools, we would still be able to provide dollars for the competition pool. If you decide the competition pool's gotta go because that's too expensive, then our money's gotta come out.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
But if you would reduce the size of the other pool, then we would still contribute the same dollar amount, because our money can go towards that competition pool. If you were to go from two locker rooms, or four locker rooms, down to two locker rooms, then we have to look at, is, okay, how could these be designed so that when we talk about athletics and activities, our teams go in there and use those, can you then, would you want two separate locker rooms for community members, that, you know, adults and, and children outside of the activities and the athletics? Then, you know, those are the little things that we, we had to sit down and take a look at. But I think there are ways that we could, architecturally, design, be able to cut some dollars out. And still have the school contribute, the school share with, but again, that's where Mark and I got to sit down and like, once you get this market analysis, we look at that very carefully.
We really, yeah, we really didn't have, we didn't really have those conversations, even with the last discussion.
Right.
To get the project to where it is today, we still had a lot of conversations to go. I don't know. And, and that's when we need, we need to bring people probably a little more creative than me into the room, like Tim Oswald and our attorneys, and, and say, okay, are there other opportunities to massage this funding source? And think about it, long-term replacement costs and lifecycle costs. Is there something else out there that we didn't think about when it comes to the funding of the facility?
What was the other pool, it's not important, you know, other way of the competition pool, but the other one that was on the, what was that pool? Jeremy, what do you think?
The recreation pool. So, so the competition pool is cooler, the recreation pool is warmer?
The recreation pool is not, the competition pool is not gonna be yet around, right? As competition.
That is correct, and that'd be, well, I don't know if YMCA, with their plans at all. For the school, we would be using it during the fall, during our football season, in the cross-country, and then in the winter during basketball wrestling season, because those are when the two girls and the guys have their competitions. For the remainder of the year, the spring, the summer, outside of what the YMCA would use it for, for youth, that's up to them. I mean, they could lower that temperature, and it's still gonna be used for regular recreation.
I like what they do today.
But it's, yeah, correct. But then as far as having parents and their children and, you know, hadiths, that pool, and...
The recreational school? Yes. Because you could lower the temperature if it's a long-term deal. But you can't do it every week, every day. No, I know, I'm just clarifying that, you know?
Six months at a time.
Yeah. Because hell, the deal, okay, if you were gonna do it every day.
They still like the colder temperature, because you warm up your exercise in, so you get warmer. And so people doing this therapy, or like the Silver Sneakers doing water aerobics, they may have, they're, they wanna get in where it's warmer. And maybe swim lessons, they can have, because of the practice, so. But, you know, or those things, we just make a compromise, because you don't have our country to stop you yet, so. But it's not true, it's competition, it's, people really, make harder.
We'll go back to the supervisor, we can ask them to help us like they did to the chair boss, right?
We have to declare ourselves a country club. You're gonna get that.
Well, we can do that, we got the Y, but can we do it? You know?
Is there anything of an intermediate nature that we need to be talking about, or long-range, Mike? I see you've got it on the agenda, but I was thinking, really, at this point, just getting out of the starting blocks is...
Who's actually said so?
Yeah, let's see, uh, Gates now, Tom's on it, I'm involved with it. See, we're down.
So I'm on the Y board. So I'm Tori Schrock, and I represent the Y board.
I can see Russ is involved with that.
Only when I show up on time.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I don't know.
Not that we noticed.
And then you had Jay, Jay's and C G's also on the street.
So the next steps is through, basically, communitys?
Yep. Creation of twenty-eight E probably, so we...
And all those, of course, will take council approval and natural.
Probably have the market and, or market research.
Yeah. You know, and since, since this is an expense of figuring out what we're gonna build, then it would be reimbursed a lot, in my opinion, through the local incentive. So it's not like we would be taking general fund dollars and spending it whichever way it counts. If there were energy fronts in mind, they'll be reimbursed out of that. Anything else?
I assume after we get further along, it would probably be another study session before it goes to the council.
Of, between evening or...
Well, we, we'll get some, we'll get some more black and white here.
That's arbitrary.
Yeah, they need that regular meeting, so.
Yep.
Or you could argue on TV if you want.
Very young dude, yeah. Makes for great sport, doesn't it? Yeah. Okay. With that understanding, I don't see anybody else who's really down to stay here, and I'm not willing to order pizza, so. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
So you're married?
Absolutely. Help yourself to a miserable, you know.